Good evening councillors and officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Lena Messina and I'm the mayor of Darabin City Council and the chairperson of tonight's hearing, Hearing of Submissions Committee. It's my pleasure to welcome you all and I declare the meeting open at 6:03pm. Darabin City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warren people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we call Darabin. Darabin Council pays respect to Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabin. We acknowledge the Wondry Warren people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters and pays respects to elders past, present and emerging. Darabin recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing is first and paramount consideration of this council and council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health and wellbeing of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. At Darabin we pride ourselves on being a progressive and contemporary council. In the interests of demonstrating leadership, I have high expectations that will be professional in our conduct and the language we use throughout the evening. The chamber is both a virtual, the chamber is virtually or in person, a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment and the public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally and as well as physically. Today is National Sorry Day. This is, it is the 25 years since the Bringing Them Home Report and 14 years since a national apology to the stolen generations in the federal parliament. On National Sorry Day, we acknowledge the injustice experienced by the stolen generations who were forcibly removed from their families and communities. We recognise the ongoing trauma and pain and pay our respects to the people of the stolen generations who made it home, those still searching and those who never made it back to their families, communities and country. Their Aboriginal flag is flying half-mast above the Preston City Hall today to commemorate the honour of Australians stolen generations. We also lighting the stolen generations marker and Darabin Arts Centre in purple, the colour of Australian native hibiscus flower representing the strength and resilience of the stolen generations. Membership, before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge the council laws and senior staff who are with us this evening. Councillor Trent McCarthy, Deputy Mayor.
Good evening Mayor.
Councillor Emily Demetriades.
Good evening Mayor.
Good evening. Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening Mayor and everyone else.
Councillor Tom Hannan.
Good evening Mayor, good evening.
Good evening. Councillor Julie Williams.
Good evening everyone.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening ma'am.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening.
And note that councillor Tim Lawrence is with us this evening. Our officers tonight are Rachel Olivier, the acting CEO, Sam Hewitt, General Manager Operations and Capital, Jodie Watson, General Manager Governance and Engagement, Shadi Hanna, who's General Manager of Communities, Vanessa Peacher, who's Acting General Manager of City and Sustainability and Strategy, Sirin Vasana, who's Chief Financial Officer, Rajna Singh, who's Senior Council Business Officer, Milan Nagda, who's the OT Help Desk. Thank you. And let's get underway. Councillors and officers, are there any disclosures of conflict of interests? There are none? Item number four, confirmation of minutes previous meetings, councillors, because I have a motion for the adoption of the minutes of Hearing of Submissions Committee held on the 8th of November 2021, moved by Julie Williams, second by councillor Greco. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, item number five, consideration as a report, and we will now move to the matter before the committee tonight, council laws. The Hearing of Submission Committee is a delegated committee of the council established for the sole purpose of exercising council's powers, functions and duties related to the hearing of submissions received in accordance with section 223 of the Local Government Act 1989. Tonight, we are hearing submissions for the draft budget 2022/2023, including the four-year budget, draft revenue rating plan, draft rates financial hardship policy and notice of intention to declare a special charge for Reservoir Village business precinct, a public waste collection service rate, curbside waste collection service charge and associated concessions. Mr Sirin Vasana, our chief executive, sorry, our chief financial officer, will introduce this report and there will be an opportunity to ask Mr Vasana questions regarding the process undertaken to get us to this point in the budget. As I have early advised, we have approximately 20 submitters wishing to be heard on this item. Before I ask Mr Vasana to introduce the report, I remind councillors and our viewers online that this evening is simply about the Hearing of Submissions Committee, listening to the submitters and no decisions on these matters will be made tonight. Our council officers will present a report on this matter to the next ordinary council meeting on the 27th of June, wherein they will make a formal recommendation to council for our consideration. Each submitter will have two minutes to speak in support of their submissions. Councillors, you know that tonight we have a minor change to our meeting layout. Our submitters this evening will present from here, which will mean that our live streaming audience can see them and as opposed to seeing the back of their heads. Submitters will be escorted in the meeting one by one as I call their names. Item number five, one, Mr Vasana to introduce the item, which is the draft budget 2022/23, including the four-year budget, draft revenue rating plan, draft rates financial hardship policy and notice of intention to declare a special rate charge for Reservoir Village business precinct, a public waste collection service rate, curbside waste collection service charge and associated concessions. Mr Vasana, please.
Through you Mayor. At the council's meeting on the 28th of March 2022, council result gave notice of its intention to adopt the draft budget 22/23 and the draft four-year budget. Prior to adopting the budget in its final form, the council placed the draft budget on a public display involving submissions by Sunday the 1st of May 2022, with any person requesting to be heard in support of their written submission to be heard by the council's Hearing of Submissions Committee at 6pm today. Fifty-four submissions were reserved by the closing date, including 20 submitters requested to be heard in support of their written submission. And I'd like the submitters to come and present to the councillors today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers regarding this item? Thank you councillors, we'll move on to the next section, which is asking the submitters to address the committee. Can I ask Andrew Holden, who may be here this evening, to address the committee? Councillors, I have a list of 20 submitters. They may not be here this evening as yet, but I'll call them one by one as per the list that I have been received. Good evening Mr Holden, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening councillors. Before I commence, I also acknowledge the traditional lands of Indigenous people on which we are meeting this evening and I pay my and my club's respects to all their leaders. I'm here on behalf of the Parkside Sports Club to ask the council to include in their budget for 2023 financial year, funds to pave and mark the car park at Pitcher Park. Pitcher Park is home to the Parkside Amateur Football Club, the Parkside Junior Football Club, the North Elphington Cricket Club and the Parkside Netball Club. We're a community club of 950 participants across 65 teams and if you include parents and guardians of our junior participants, there are close to 2,000 affiliated members. And that doesn't include the Parkside Golf Club. The car park is approximately 35 square metres, so we're not talking about a large piece of land. It is unpaved and the surface is gravel and dirt. Due to heavy use, it becomes undulating and uneven. And when it rains, the water is retained and the car park becomes muddy and a hazard. Two of the 65 teams are all abilities football teams that play in the Football Integrated Development Association, referred to as FEDA. Parkside is a foundation feeder club and have been playing football for over 25 years. The two teams comprise both high functioning team and a low functioning team. Some of our players live in assisted residential care or with elderly parents. Their mobility is at risk on such a surface. It is dangerous. Access to the ground is severely hampered by the state of the car park. However, this is not limited to our feeder team. In my time at the club, we've had a grandparent trip on the car park's uneven surface and severely bruised her face. We also had a parent confined to electric wheelchair who found it extremely challenging to access the ground to watch his son play junior football. Our feeder teams play five games each season at Pitcher Park. It's not fair to our players or their carers or supporters that they should have to endure this. The council asks sporting clubs to promote inclusion and diversity and as a club, we 100% support that too. As well as our two all ability teams, we have junior girls cricket and football and this year we had inaugural senior women's cricket team and are currently in our second year of a senior women's football team. We are doing all we can to promote diversity and inclusion. We face many challenges, including the state of our change rooms and toilet and bathroom facilities, which are all substandard.
Sorry, I have to stop you in time. Sorry. I felt really guilty doing that, but I had to stick to the rules.
I apologise for the thing. I would just add one thing, a couple of things, that as a club, we have spent $34,000 on toilets that belong to the council. We've spent $80,000 doing the canteen and all we're asking is for our car park. It's my understanding around us, McDonald Park, Alton Reserve and Baling all have paved car parks and we would just like the same thing.
Thank you. Perhaps you can email the councillors.
I've done that. I would like to acknowledge councillor Emily Demetriades, who's been very helpful for us.
Thank you. The next member we'd like, the committee member we'd like to listen to or member of the public is Mr Mark Cooper, if he's available, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our submission this evening. Also thank you to the councillors, the executive and staff for all the work you do for the community. I represent community-minded citizens in and around Northcote that would like to see the addition of permanent sanitary facilities and a commitment from council to prevent the further disrepair at Northcote tennis courts. Most pressing is the complete lack of appropriate female-friendly amenities at the courts. This is a huge deterrent to female participation for tennis in Northcote. There is currently one portaloos on site for use by all patrons. A recent planned community day at the courts, rescheduled to later, later due to COVID, was nearly halted due to council's concerns about lack of appropriate toilet facilities. I'm sure the irony on that is not lost on anyone. Although the courts are fit for purpose, there are signs of creeping neglect. A petition was circulated amongst the local community, which raised concerns about the neglect. To this date, so received 122 signatures. The overarching theme of comments attached to those signatures was that there are very poor representation of council sporting facilities, with many choosing to play elsewhere. Some quotes, "I played on Sunday, March 6th after it had rained on Saturday. Courts one and two were unplayable due to slippery dirt that had washed onto the courts. There are sticks propping up nets which are dangerous. A young boy on the court next to us got his foot caught in the tape that has unraveled from the court net and had a nasty fall. These courts are such a great asset to the area and it's a shame to see them dangerous and in disrepair." Another quote, "The only nighttime ladies tennis team in which I was a member is unable to play represent Northcote as we have done for four years due to the poor conditions. We now have to rent courts in Yolambi." As it stands, there are significant deterrence to participation in lessons, social or competitive play at the courts. Tennis is a great year-round intergenerational participation sport that attracts people from diverse backgrounds. We look forward to action being taken to remedy the most urgent need for appropriate amenities and further commitment to properly maintain this valuable community asset.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I now ask Ellie Towick, who's with us this evening, I hope. Just one moment councillors. Number three. I have a list of submitters coming in. On my sister. I don't know how they appear on yours, sorry. Now we welcome Caroline Lunt. Good evening. Good to see you. Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Good to see you Caroline.
Thanks. I'm going to go fast because I've got a lot to say, as usual. The draft budget is focused on supporting the community and making the lives of those who live, work and play in Darabin better. I'm speaking against the introduction of a curbside waste fee and the public waste rate. Council estimates there'll be a shortfall of 26 million over 10 years, that's 2.6 million for next year. If the state government has put a cap on rate rises and is overhauling household recycling, including an extra bin for glass, then this raises many questions for me as a rate payer. One, has council held talks with the state government about the reason council is seeking an extra 2.6 million? Surely the state government needs to support council in providing some revenue. Two, if this fee and rate are separate to our rates, then who will make the decision as to the cost? Will this increase each year? Will a household with one person pay the same amount as a family of six people? If so, this seems very unfair. Can residents opt out of these new charges? I do hope, hope this is not a one-size-fits-all solution. Let me give you some examples of why this solution, I believe, is unfair. On average, Mayor, you know, I've weighed today, my waist for the last three weeks was 120 grams. That's 40 grams a week. I put my cycling and waste bins out once a year, so under this system, I'd be paying $104 or $156 for my once-a-year collection. Second example, a friend of mine has a green bin but only uses it for the plane tree leaves in Fairfield in her street. Should she be charged for doing the council's work? My litter officer, who each Friday on the creek collects litter from the riparian zone, may longer want to take the rubbish home to fill her bin. In opposing these new charges, I believe this is a one-size-fits-all, as I've said. Council, this is an easy solution but does not address reducing waste to landfill. I ask that you be more creative. Use incentives to lower waste and recycling. Educating residents and explain what the issues are. Be fair and charge by weight. Open, this is costly, but we have suggested this for years, open a resource recovery centre in the south like the one in Clifton Hill or cooperate, cooperate with the city of Yarra to share these resources. Encourage residents to share bins, compost and worm farms and to handle their own waste and recycling. Are there any areas where council can cut 26 million overspending on consultants or management? Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Caroline.
Sorry, I had to hurry.
No, you did well and I know how much of a, was it, waste, no, no, I know how much of a waste warrior you are. No, you haven't, sorry. I didn't want to stop you because I. Thank you. Thank you Caroline. I now like to introduce or invite Amelia Storm. Welcome. Good evening Amelia. You have two minutes when, yeah, not, yeah, yeah.
Hi everyone, my name's. Hi, I'm Amelia Storm. I work in High Street, Northcote, at the Uniting Church as an artist. I have a year seven child at Thornbury High and we're a new family to Thornbury High School. My other two children went to Princess Hill. We love Thornbury High School, it's absolutely been amazing. I ask for your support to instigate an urgently needed pedestrian crossing and supervisor for the Matisse Street entrance to Thornbury High School, as it is so dangerous. My child needs to cross the road to get home. I keep seeing cars nearly hitting children and adults and I've seen one car nearly hit a small child on a scooter heading towards Penders Grove Primary School. Cars and trucks are flying around the corners and not stopping. Hot it up cars are showing up, showing off in front of the students as the kids leave school, driving like they have a death wish. There are no crossing places except a small lump of concrete in the middle of the road near the back gate. And there's cars that go in and out of those two gates. It's very hard to get across the road. There's Mack trucks regularly, regularly driving on the street. Something terrible will happen if something isn't done. We need a pedestrian crossing, a speed limit and a supervisor and speed humps. I know that Thornbury High has specialist programmes for children with special needs and I don't think these children would be able to cross. I have to rearrange my work week so my 13-year-old doesn't have to navigate this road and when I can't supervise, I've had to ask my family to help. She walks along the Darabin Creek, it's a really beautiful walk. It's just this one road. She, she loves to look at butterflies and collect sticks and she's just a child. So yeah, that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I now like to invite Constantine Walter. That's not how it's on my, okay, it's Walter Constantine, sorry. Somebody put it the wrong way around. Good evening and welcome. You'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Hello everyone councillors. My name's Walter Costantini. I'm the president of Thornbury Athletic Football Club. We're based out at Ellie Kochen Reserve, Macy Avenue. Club's got a bit of history. The Oval's got a bit of history. Used to be the recruitment ground for Collingwood in the early 70s. Ellie Kochen now hosts a cricket club that has the Oval for seven months during the summer season and we have it for five months in the winter season. There's a great demand for us to sort of use the Oval for a longer period of time. That said, it's a growing sport and it's forever wanting more space, I guess. That said, there was a collective decision that was made to carry out a community needs assessment by us and understanding community needs and gaps between the services that currently exist and, and what should exist. There were deficiencies at the pavilion. Some of those deficiencies where we have one dressing room and a second dressing room that backs up as a common area. We don't have disabled toilets, we don't have grab rails, we don't have wheelchair access, we don't have ramps. And we've been fighting with departments to get basic necessities that are required by the community. We're continuously asked to increase capacity, female-friendly etc. We can't invite women's groups, coaches, players, mothers, sisters to come and join the club because we don't have the facilities. We're constantly told that we need to keep pushing, push the envelope, recruit, get people in, but we can't do that for the community because we don't have the facilities. So we've got to build it before they come. We're in direct competition with other clubs that can facilitate it. We can't. Our lighting is inadequate, our oval is inadequate, we can't fit soccer pitches within an oval where you've got a triangle and you're trying to fit it into a circle. We're asking for funds, for redevelopment, work together and just build a master plan that's going to work for the community. Our objective is to basically include not only just sporting codes, but we want to run twilight sessions during the spring, we want to run hubs, that's it.
I feel so bad to do that. I feel horrible, but I have to give everybody the equal time. I'm so sorry.
Thank you guys, enjoy.
Please feel free to email your submission to councillors. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Ellie Kochen, yes, it was, yeah. I'm sorry councillors, I feel bad stopping people who are in the middle of a speech. I'll now ask Angie Davidson, Jane Robinson and Maddie Brennan. Oh, no, we have somebody else coming in. Good evening.
Thank you everyone. Thank you Mayor, councillors. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like you to have a good look around you, take in what you see. And now I want you to close your eyes and, and see what you can take in around you, what you can see. And what can you see? Nothing, that's right. Darkness. That's what happens every night at our tennis club at Lakeview. So my name's Richard Cosway, I'm president of Lakeview Tennis Club in Reservoir. I'm here tonight to raise a bit of awareness about some desperately needed capital investment in lighting at Lakeview Tennis Club. We're located on the north side of Edwards Lake. We're a proud club with about 50 years' history, a wide diverse range of members. We have about 50 different ethnicities and some of those are from the most disadvantaged areas of Darabin. And despite our aging facilities, we've seen incredible growth over the last couple of years, about 200%. This is made due to the amazing work of committee and parents. But our facilities are really, really rundown. Our court lighting's really old, our poles are falling down, some of them are leaning at 45 degrees. Some of them don't even have lighting at all, which is really affecting our ability to grow and develop and field teams and field night coaching. And with forecasts suggesting we could hit somewhere around about 5,000 participants, including parents and spectators by 2030 with the right facilities. What we really need is a lighting upgrade to convert our really outmoded lighting system to LED lights. That would bring us into line with other sporting clubs in the area and also drastically reduce our bills and carbon footprint as well. So we've put together a development proposal. It's available for your perusal and to do this, we need about $200,000, which is something we cannot possibly do as a club through raffles or bunnings, sausage sizzles. It's just not possible. We need some buy-in from our most important stakeholder, which is you guys, Darabin Council. It's a council facility that we run very well and it's a really important asset to the community as I've, as I've pointed out. So we need some buy-in so we can really put a spotlight on the tennis stars of tomorrow instead of leaving them in the dark. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome.
Hi everyone. Got some of my board here with me tonight. I am here to talk to you about the food relief crisis that we're going through at the moment. We're really struggling. Last year you supported us, council supported us with $65,000 and we utilised that well. You'll see a report coming around that says we were doing about 2,000 kilos of food relief a week, worth about $60,000 in our product for the enabled house as such. This year, we've discovered that it's been cut. The funding has been cut. So council are providing us only $15,000 and right now, the cost of living is, has, you know, gone up so much and people are really struggling and in crisis and to tears every day. It's very hard. We're doing 1,300 people a month. If you were to do that service, you'll have a look on the back page of what I've given you, we've costed out what that would cost you. So we're asking you to bridge the gap of $50,000 to help us out to get through another year because this year is a little bit an anomaly. So with that, we predict that we would be able to continue to deliver this service, whereas it would cost you that per week pretty much to do our operation. We are all friendly with everybody in Darabin. We know the food relief services. We work together. We're not doing this in isolation. We have businesses, we have support, all those things. We do it so well. If you were to do it, because we can't continue it, it would cost you a lot more than we're asking for. So I, please hear me when we say, that's why I have some of the board here tonight, because it is serious. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Councillors, I've just been told that there are a few submitters who do have handouts and they'll be placed on that table there and will be distributed to councillors at the end. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please state your name and what organisation you're representing.
Thank you. It will all be, it will become, become.
Thank you, it will all be, it will become clear. Hello, I'm Tom and this is my old friend Jamie. We're local artists with a vision for a new creative hub in northern Darabin, built around studio spaces, hot desking and especially community creative workshops.
Our proposal, built on meeting Darabin leaders and artists alike, requests temporary access to the old reservoir library, a building prime for a new community-focused life. We will run a 12-month pilot programme called the Nobel Project, north of Bell Street.
Between us, we've run multiple creative projects with large budgets. The pilot programme means we can build on our experiences while adapting them to this special proposal. It will also allow the council to assess its impact on the community with just an initial short-term commitment.
We can fit 35 freestanding studios in the library, easily installed and removed, hot desking space for up to 25 that we call the Village Square. We've created an artist's impression of it in our application from page 12.
The Village Square will become an afternoon workshop for secondary students where they can meet together, create and bond with a resident artist. Both groups were hit severely by COVID and we believe we can all help inspire each other and move forward together.
When I was young, I didn't have a creatively supportive home, but once a family friend saw my drawings and said they were amazing and this act of encouragement fuelled me for years. If our workshop can reach just one teenager like that, it will all be worth it.
And it's not just young people we want to support. We'll also run open-age evening workshops because everyone can blossom from a bit of creative nurturing.
When we found Darabin's creative and cultural infrastructure framework, we realised that our dream is also yours.
Every word of it aligns with our vision, but on the very last page it directly expresses the need for a creative hub in reservoir, including co-working spaces and artist studios. It talks of rejuvenating reservoir and supporting its evolution as a creative, community-focused place.
It even quotes an artist saying that 'things grow from the ground are more likely to thrive'. We have prototypes of our bookmarks that we're calling our calling cards, celebrating our building's history and your, these buildings, our building's history. Five defining objects are on the back.
Giving a local asset back to its community.
Giving local artists a place to build a community.
Giving locals access to their artists.
And letting locals unlock their creativity.
Building a creative community hub together.
So thank you for your time, we hope you're inspired by our application and that with council support, we can all get artistic together soon in the Village Square. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Cheers.
Very creative. It's so hard to say time. Yeah, yeah. Councillors, I'm going to give a 10-second warning to the speakers so they know it's time, sorry. Good evening. Hello Ruth.
Good evening, lovely to see you again and good evening everyone. I'll be as brief as I possibly can this evening. The budget papers describe the safe travel programme as being one that helps people travel without using a vehicle and emphasises considerations for the mobility of the very young and the very old. What is left unclear in the budget papers is exactly how much is being allocated to the safe travel programme, which presumably incorporates infrastructure projects arising from the Your Street You'll Say initiative. This leaves me with hope and optimism that there is still room in the budget and time for council to commit to fund the popular octopus schools programme again this year and over the next three to five years, as well as sustainable and safe travel improvements in neighbourhoods surrounding our local schools. There are many surveys that indicate parents hold safety concerns and we've heard from parents this evening about their children travelling to school on foot, by bike or on scooters. And I'm sure that this is backed up by council's own consultations with school communities throughout Darabin. There is also a lot of evidence that demonstrates the impact of building safe travel infrastructure. I don't need to go into the detail of that because it is probably already well-known to council staff as well as to at least some of the councillors in the room this evening. I'll conclude by saying this. If it feels safe for the children in our community to use it and to get to and from school, it will feel safe for everybody in our community to use it. This is the key to ensuring sustainable, safe travel in Darabin. We simply must build the Darabin that the children in our community need now and for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you Ruth, thank you. Good evening, David Sutowski. Yes, you have two minutes.
Good evening mayor and councillors, thank you all for your ongoing support of Preston Lions. The revitalised profile of the club has resulted in BT Connor playing a pivotal role in the wellbeing of our growing community. Our club continues to show initiative by presenting this self-funded synthetic field business costing study. Based on the advice in 2020 by James Carbone from Leisure, we are prepared to make the required financial commitment, similar to our pavilion contribution. I'm urging you to consider allocating funding which aligns with council's Outdoor Sports Infrastructure Framework Plan, which guides and informs capital contribution for redevelopments and recognises the 48.4% growth of population, indicates 64% of current sports facilities are at capacity, indicates that all-weather synthetic surfaces are providing a significant solution for additional facilities and can withstand a higher number of weekly hours of use than turf ovals and identifies a requirement for one further rectangular synthetic surface in the municipality, BT Connor being one key site. Club facts, we have an amazing indigenous leader, Benji Liverdeagoss, and a new indigenous children's football programme being launched. 160% increase in female registrations. We cover all age groups from four years old and above and our current 400 participants are trending to grow to 650 in the next two to three years. Our women and men's teams are sitting on top of the tables and we will be the city of Darabin's only team playing in a national league that's been televised starting 23/24. This is the biggest sporting club in your municipality and one of the biggest football clubs in Australia. The reality, we lose 40% of our training, thank you guys, well done. We lose 40% of our training sessions and games due to the conditions of the grounds. Ground four has been deemed unplayable at all times during the course of the year. The proposed development will allow us to allow other clubs and schools to utilise the facility, increase female participation by a further 50%, attract over 30 hours of school usage and rest other council natural turf fields and allow all-year-round access, which we don't have at the moment.
That's time, sorry. Do you have one more sentence? One more sentence?
Yes, thank you. The proposal has a compelling environmental benefit with water harvesting to irrigate the rest of the turf park, reduce the carbon footprint by 50% and reduce microplastics by 99% and embraces recycled material in the building of the field and ensures it is recyclable at the end of the life cycle of it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know who's next. Good evening. Good evening, if you could state your name and the club that you represent, thank you.
Good evening everybody, thank you for being here, my name is Michael Skleras. I am representing the Northcote City Football Club. Alongside me I have our treasurer Nick Pelvis. I proudly represent Northcote City Football Club. We are a soccer club that represents people of all abilities, from all ages, from four years old up until members that participate well and truly into their mid-50s. We are operating currently out of the John Kane precinct and we're very proud to operate a gender-balanced committee and we feel that we are very closely aligned to council's objectives of increasing female participation within our municipality. This is evident through us, this is evident through us, this year alone, we've outlaid as a club off the back of a pandemic almost $70,000 towards an initiative to really draw upon females playing for free and enjoying the game of football. We've been able as a result to increase our membership by three new junior teams as a result of that and bring in coaching and coaching resources and additional equipment that's required to serve that. And we do that where we operate essentially out of two fields, out of John Kane precinct. We have a membership of about 350 active players, of which 80 of which are females at the moment. 50 of those, about 40 or 50 of those were increased this year alone. Our female membership is represented through our All Abilities Programme, our Junior Girls, our Mini Rues and our Soccer Mums Programme and we're soon to be launching new walking football initiatives as well just to try to bring upon new people to have access to the game. The challenges that we have as a club is that out of those 350 participants, we operate essentially out of two fields, one of them which doesn't have any female facilities at all, let alone any facilities outside of the playing field and inadequate lighting. Lighting is overshadowed through the field of pitch one and it only gives us about 60% coverage. This offers significant challenges around safety and wellbeing for our members and it creates an environment which is very tough for us to continue any growth. We know that our objectives in our growth are going to be very challenged and we're not going to be able to achieve our goals of getting towards a 50/50 participation rate in the short term purely because the infrastructure facilities don't allow for it. We're imploring council to work with us and create an overall feasibility where we can address the immediate concerns of improved lighting and adding some female-friendly facilities and change rooms particularly to afford young girls and women the privacy of being able to change and compete in an environment that is, yeah. As you know, we have, council is fully aware, we've brought councillors and we've brought federal members to our club and they've seen our challenges firsthand, but essentially we have an environment there where we've got girls changing in a unisex change room.
Thank you, thank you, I was trying to say time, sorry, it's my fault, sorry. It's really hard to stop people.
Apologies as well, our vice president John was meant to be presenting tonight, he's unfortunately contracted COVID and he was better prepared, so it was at the 11th hour I tried to take over the reins. So thank you so much for considering and listening to our submission, thank you.
Thank you Michael. It's really hard to stop them when they're in there. Two minutes really is enough for submissions.
Christina. It's lovely to be here and I'm here to ask council to continue to partner with Diverse to deliver the urban food programme, which takes action on two of council's 10 big actions, responding to the climate emergency and supporting vulnerable members of our community for better health and wellbeing. As you know, at Diverse, we know the value of food. We grow fresh and nutritious food in our volunteer-run gardens and we support Darabin households to grow and donate fruit and veg. That's almost 5,000 kilos in the last three years. And we then share this produce with locals experiencing food insecurity, supporting 200 households each fortnight. The urban food programme also builds community by connecting with volunteers, local householders, schools and businesses to share skills, gardening materials and friendship. Our funding from council ends on the 30th of June and the next partnership grant round doesn't open until later this year. The timing means there's a funding gap and that creates uncertainty for the continued operation of this critical programme. To retain the services of the experienced programme manager, the 50 volunteers they coordinate, build on programme investment to date and ensure continuity, we're asking council fund another year of the programme at $30,000. In the context of increasing cost of living expenses and the need for social connection as we move into COVID recovery, this is a small investment for much growth and benefit. Increased food security, the programme supplies an extra 15% of produce for food relief and this will continue to grow. Improved physical and mental health and wellbeing, job and volunteer opportunities, learning and skills development, reduced food miles and food waste, increased biodiversity and a circular economy in action through propagation and composting. Diverse is a leader in Darabin in urban food production and in mobilising the community to take climate action, address food insecurity and increase social connection and we welcome council's continued investment in this programme, thank you.
Thank you Christina, thank you for sticking to time too. Good evening and welcome Serena.
Thank you mayor and councillors. I'm in the awkward position that I don't actually have my presentation because it didn't get emailed back to me, so I'll just be speaking off the cuff. I also tried to email you a document and it wouldn't let me because it was too big. So I'm going to speak to, I'm not sure what exactly, but what I'm asking for is that more money be put into supporting the work of the Rewilding Programme. At the moment, the funds that go into rewilding is for starting the rewilding, but not necessarily for the maintenance. And so when I can find a way to email these files to you, what you'll see is, for instance, I have a dozen pictures of trees dying from poor preparation and weed invasion at the former Ruthven Primary School in the 16th of February 2021. Again, even more weed invasion, more dead trees, trees falling over in October, 31st of October 2021. I have pictures of trees planted in the wrong place, both at the Ruthven Primary School, the TW Andrews Reserve, and I don't have pictures of this, but I saw this, the wrong trees planted at Donath Reserve. Now, in the case of Ruthven and TW Andrews, those trees were either going to be replaced or have been replaced. But that's expensive, every time you plant something in the wrong place and you have to replace it, that's costing council more money. And finally, I have some pictures of Clements Reserve in January 2022 where the weeds were waist-high in Clements Reserve and myself and a neighbour went into the area and hand-weeded it because there was not enough resources to get this done. So I guess what I'm saying is it's better to do, to keep it up before it gets invaded with weeds and before you have to spend a lot of money on poisons and obviously poisons are not desirable for the community either. So that's all I can think of, unless it's something you can see in my presentation I've missed.
Well, perhaps you can, would you like to email it or perhaps give us a disc and we'll take it from there?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, that was, thank you. Okay, that's all councillors, we've heard from a number of submitters tonight. Do I have a motion councillors? Can we have the motion, do we have it on the screen? Basically, we will be accepting the written and verbal submissions and thank all submitters and presenters for addressing the committee to support their written responses and refers all submissions for further consideration to the council meeting to be held on the 27th of June 2022 as part of council's declaration in adoption of the Budget 2022/23, incorporating the four-year budget and item four, notes that submissions that are not incorporated in the 2022/23 budget where we refer for consideration in the development of the draft 2022/3, 2024 budget. Councillors, moved by councillor McCarthy, second by councillor Rennie, all those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously councillors. I now declare that the close of meeting at, let me just check the time.